We want to show you that we want to be with you and want to be married to you guys. So, we haven't had it worse yet. So, it goes back to that priority for us.
This is on both parts of monthly contract.
Yeah, sir. It's month to month. I mean, a lot of people want to lock them in. I mean, I know what I'm looking off.
How are your help tickets handled? Do you install a program on everybody's computer?
So, we usually do a little, it's a little agent that's on the front of the computer. And what we do that's different than most folks is I give you your engineers' phone numbers, but also we like to push everything through the lab tech agent if possible. But at the end of the day, you guys are used to Raleigh. I want to make that as close to that scenario as possible, meaning that you can call him anytime. You have his extension. You have his email direct line. Most of my customers have like Aaron Wallace at union.gov dot com. He's just a part of your infrastructure. So, the way you contact Raleigh is the same way you contact Aaron. Now, we have some economies of scales and efficiencies that you can do at Help Desk, do a little system tray at the bottom. Of course, we have that and it goes right to Aaron and it goes right to the three engineers that cover your account and then it backs up to Help Desk.
Is the response time the same on the ticket?
Yeah. It depends on the issue of the ticket, but it goes based upon that timeframe, sir.
Yeah, because that's what we're used to now and that's what we're going to have to acclimate into. Like I said earlier with another presentation is right now we are used to having somebody on site. So, let's say for example, the state's attorney, he's doing something off the laptop. It goes down. He's used to being on the pickup phone and Raleigh coming up there looking over his shoulder to do it. Whereas if now, you know, we might have Aaron log into that to see what's wrong. Because if we call him, then are these response times for after hours or is this? Let's take that scenario. State's attorney is down. Well, that would be a level four according to this, which is within 48 hours, but he's in court. I need it now.
Right. That would be an exception. That would be for state's attorney. That's a level one if he's down and there is a court case that has to be adjudicated. You know, whatever language, we're not trying to harbor you into a little.
No, but see, but that's what I'm trying to get because, you know, the same way as the sheriff's department, if one of their laptops go down or something, everything at that time when it's down, in the eyes of the holder, it's a level one. I mean, that's what I'm getting at. When it goes down, whoever's sitting behind that computer screen, it's a level one.
Well, because of the laptops for my guys is critical because this is how we do everything.
And that's what I'm getting at.
We have to do our reporting for crashes or more report writing, any of that. So, when they're without that, they can't work.
Yeah, and but here's your deal too, Scott, with that, you know, if it did go down, then we're still going to have to get on the phone, call Raleigh and see whatever. Now, my question is if it's three o'clock in the morning, the computer goes down then and it's a level one in our eyes, then I'm sure Aaron didn't want to get called three o'clock in the morning to log on there to find out what's going on, but we have to have that up at the time. So.
I will be calling my business hours to, hey, we gotta get this fixed.
Okay. Good call.
Unless it's a server issue, a major network issue.
And Aaron and all my guys know, IT is not an eight to five down. Never is. It's never convenient, right? And that's why we can't bill it from an eight to five scenario. And that's why we have to put some like other companies that after five is a billable charge. We can't do that for you for that scenario and I don't want to do that for you, to be honest with you, because you're used to that Raleigh. You're used to that call at three o'clock in the morning. And if it needs to happen, Aaron, how many customers, that's Seminole Electric, an ISP. How many times they call you at night?
I was up till four o'clock yesterday morning working with Seminole Electric.
My guys are used to it.
Yeah, and that's something and that's something that the other commissioner brought up is, you know, when we're looking at that, we have to look at what's best for our employees and the office holders to do their job. But then our job too is we have to look, like you said, where meets the wallet? Where the wallet.
A hundred percent. A hundred percent.
So, I work with best what we get, but you know, like you said, if we get into this billing of the after hours and you know, then we run into the, you know, our monthly expense now is going to go up through the roof. You know, we have to put a safeguard in there somewhere.
And also, that's a two-fold scenario. Why it's a 30-day out, right? And a 30-day out is, I'm not saying you guys, right, but we're kind of going in this blind. Agreed?
Yeah, everybody's going in blind.
No, just weird to do this way. So, I put a 30-day out in there. It's not only for you guys. It could be for me. I've had customers, not you guys, not a city, but they've taken advantage of that. And I wouldn't have married with the best of intentions and they didn't. And I had to let them go. Yes, we haven't lost an account since 2009 except for like medical companies like BJC firing another one out. But have I fired a account? I have two of them because what they, the handshake agreement and the agreement that's in front of them, they didn't abide by it because they, my good faith of not billing them was taking his weakness and boy, they just ran with that. And that's just not my business model. I come in here as a service provider and hopefully make a fair trade, fair dollar for what we're trying to provide for what Raleigh services and hopefully you don't take advantage of me and I don't take advantage of you. And if anyone get cross, well.
Well, and hopefully too with IT the way that it is, that those kind of things would be few and far between because you're staying ahead of the game the whole time.
Hundred percent.
So, the state's attorney calling you and say, hey, my laptop just crashed. You guys should be able to see that before it happens.
And we can remote in with advanced software that we have now. We can remote in with things that are live. And we will tell you, but we can remote in Angie's computer and say she's working on something. And like Angie, we're going to remote in, but you're not going to even know or let you know that we're going to remote in and fix your Outlook or fix your CRM plugin or your billing or DevNet, right? DevNet you got to use. DevNet or your KI lawman and your guy wouldn't even know it. Hey, just pull up to the station where Wi-Fi is at. We're going to fix the mobile crash reporting and then, okay, go and get a coffee and then also do your, you know, whatever you have to do from a paperwork scenario. By the time you get out of the car, you know, hopefully it'll be fixed. We do that kind of stuff behind the scenes all the time. And that's what makes this minutia of contract, which I love talking contract because everybody's got to make sure the Ts and Cs are crossed, right? But the minutia of managed services, that's why I go back to that trust factor I mentioned before, is because there's these intangibles within contract law that never can be fully covered. But it's looking someone in the eye and say, hey, trust us. We have your best interest in mind and we have contractual language that says if we don't.
Okay, another question too. As far as our website hosting design.
Hosting, yeah. So, hosting we can do. Website changes we can do. From literally putting like, the big thing that I heard from Angie when we were in here is that you guys post meetings and video of your guys' sessions all day. We can put that, we can upload that. We can host it wherever you want. Now, design. Design is a different scenario, meaning that IT companies don't usually do website design. It's just a concrete company trying to do interiors. It's just a totally different game. Do we know IT designers? Of course. Of course. I'm sure you guys maybe want to use a local company that's around here to kind of keep money within the counties.
But whatever design are at, we have, you will make sure it all works.
We will definitely make sure all plugins work, all everything to the state's attorney's office. Everything from that scenario will work from our, we're a liaison. The website design is a third party. It'd be like us trying to mitigate your guys' jailing camera system that's through some third-party company. We'll make sure that connectivity is there. We'll make sure that design elements from the board get into there. But the guys who write that code, that design and make that graphically look nice, that's not us.
I just want to make sure that if whatever design is up, if I go down here and click that to open this window or these other folders over here, when I click that, I want that to work.
Right. And if it doesn't work, then we're your liaison to make that work. It's like your phone system. Like your phone system is a Mitel system, right? Through Frontier, right? Well, Frontier has the codec, right? And we can do moves, adds and changes, right? Add Alex, you know, add different folks, right? But at the end of the day, to actually get in a backend system, you guys pay a maintenance contract for that. But we're the liaison because my team's technical and can talk that technical jargon and get whoever's phone fixed.
Can you make it talk to everybody in the courthouse?
If it can. If what you can do.
So, here's a problem. We don't have any way to notify somebody in emergency in this building. The intercom system will not. All I can do is on my floor. I can't give an intercom a blanket message to anybody in this building.
Is the intercom a separate system?
Well, I don't know. It's all a Mitel system and I don't understand it.
I think we should be able to do that with what we've got.
But most systems, I'll tell you because I've installed a lot of voice over IP systems, what they have called paging ports, right? And if you have a paging system, a paging what they call Viking speaker. It's probably most commonality speaker. Viking speaker. You put a paging port, dial nine four two. It's usually a kind of extension code, but a real weird one, right? So, no one dials it by accident and starts talking out loud, but. And then all of a sudden you can page nine four two, then you can page all zones. Then there's a page code usually for Mitel. Mitel's a really good system. It's like short tail of Cisco. It's a number one or two or three systems out there, right? So, you dial that coding, you can do nine four one is maybe level three or, you know, or ambulance. You know, it's all integrated over voice. So, you can do paging codes based upon that. But you have to have the speakers and the paging port has to be activated, which we can get with Frontier, see if that'll work. We can do our own discovery with our, it's just, that's more of a discovery question, but it's definitely in our wheelhouse to try to figure out whether it can or can't do.
Well, Mike, you can, we could pick up our phone downstairs and intercom a specific extension up here. You just can't do an all call or it would put it out to every phone.
From your cell phone.
No, no. From the desk phone. So, they are somewhat connected because we can intercom either for.
There's got to be, Scott.
We can get with Frontier because you guys have an active service counter over Frontier. So, if we tell them that, hey, this system, we wanted to actively page what they call page zones, activate it, it could literally be a tick box and a GUI that needs to be put.
Somebody's been to answer that for me and so that's why I ask. If we don't have a way to notify this whole building.
I can tell you a hundred percent that I can give you that answer if you give me 24 hours. But I can't fix it. I can't fix it. I said, I ain't promised I can fix it. I can just get you an answer whether you can or can't do it.
The website maintenance and so forth, is that included in the?
Yeah. Maintenance, hosting, that's part of our services because maintenance. How do we look at a website? It's just another server to us, to be honest with you.
And as we're doing, I've asked this to everybody, we're currently delayed showing the video of the meeting. It's not live. I mean, we're taping it right now. It's going to go on there later on today on YouTube deal. Can you?
Make it live?
Make it live.
You can livestream it straight to YouTube if you want to.
I want to livestream it straight to our site.
Yeah. Yeah, you can either.
Or somebody can get on our website and watch it live.
Yeah, there's two ways you can do it. You can either build all that streaming yourself, which I would not recommend, or you can livestream it to YouTube, but then embed that YouTube video into your site. So, they would go to your site, click play. It's a live stream. It's just coming through YouTube on the backend.
And speaking of the websites, as far as postings to the websites, I mean, sometimes they're not urgent. They don't have to go up right away. Sometimes we may get the agenda done at five o'clock. It's got to be posted by eight o'clock the next morning.
Just let us know timeframes.
Okay.
Just like anybody, you'd like to know a little bit of that.
Right. And that's a, normally I need it posted within the next two days. But sometimes it does, you know, run over and it may even be posted the next day. I don't think it's ever been within 30 minutes or within an hour or like that. So.
Great. What do you think's fun in that situation you've got down there?
I have fiber running into one filter. I have two filters. My crews are across the street. They do their computer recording on PCRs. Yet then by now, right now, it's running on a wireless G system, which is just to me unacceptable. I don't think our encryption is deep enough for that information to be traveled in my server. It opens us up to breach data, which we both know that we get into violation of these HIPAA rules. The HIPAA police are present.
One incident, one leak of EFI, electronic personnel, is up to $10,000 per instance. So, it can get pricey.
So, what I'm proposing is I'm assuming that, having asked the same question to other vendors, that we would most likely have to make the purchase of the hardware portion of this. You guys could install whatever, you know, like a ubiquity, small ubiquity system.
Be a point-to-point.
Yes.
Point-to-point ubiquity system because it's most cost-effective to do line of sight?
And our line of sight is clear.
Yeah, you said it's right across the street, right?
It's a piece of cake on that. But I want it to where the system goes, nobody can interfere with that. A previous vendor had mentioned, you know, making sure that, you know, Mac address on one end, Mac address on the other. Third-party tries to enter, can't happen. Whatever our security system. But I want to make sure that by the time that information uploads into the folder on my server, on my side of the street, that it's safe. And with that, whatever, I walked in late, so I apologize because I was on the phone taking care of other things. But making sure that our server then is backed up mirrored somewhere so that, and encrypted because with everything going on with these guys starting to make these surprise visits on entities, that I am protecting the entity because you said it yourself, these cops are envious and I know that. And I don't, I have to report that publicly. I'm into the point of getting airtime on a local TV station to say we were breached.
Well, and here's the problem about the HIPAA police, even though they're scary, right? And we have to abide by them. These other places that I work have to abide by them. But the money that they get are so few and far between from like folks like you, right? Which they're looking for the big dollars, right? But where the everyday Joe, which is ambulance district, because I had a health department that just got hit, it's ransomware. It's locking up your systems, which is a breach, and then saying, hey, let's look at their financials. And I've seen this down to a penny. Down to a penny where they look at someone's financials for the year and make their ransom what they earn quarterly, just to show them that they know how much they earn and do you want to pay a ransom quarterly to get your data back? I've seen it. So, my point is, yes, we can do that. We can make sure that those breaches from HIPAA are all checked the boxes, but more importantly that your data doesn't become compromised by some Russian 21-year-old kid and wants to exert $21,000 from the city government, county government, sorry. That's our biggest hurdle. That's what we want to prevent because the likelihood of HIPAA police coming is less than point zero zero one. I'm just in the realm of happening. Ransomware is not a if anymore. It's a when. It's an 18%.
The Russians are knocking on your door right now. Like they're, somebody is hitting that box.
We do this all the time for a lot of big enterprise type companies. And they're, and they spend millions on things and we still find things that, a little camera that's doing chatter that has a backdoor because they logged from China and it's using as a Linux server and that little camera can be a server that spits out code to everywhere else. And then you can't find it. It pings all over. We do stuff like that all the time. So, to make sure that you guys are safe, our biggest priority is ransomware. And not only that, we want to make sure, like I said, the check-in and box for HIPAA is compliant and you're compliant so you don't have to do those rigors of CMS in your way. But it's more important because the big dollars that people will exhume from you guys are ransomware, crypto-lot. And that's what we.
We're in the process of trying to slowly work, take a step forward now because slowly as we get away from paper, you know, and we upload our reports, I want to take the redundancy out of the system now. Harrison is our software provider for billing and we also use Office Online. This is our clearinghouse for CMS Medicare because we have to go through a clearinghouse. Okay, you can't go directly to Medicare. So, we use these programs to load this information into. So, if my staff, through what we're using present, which I do not authenticate. It's the AMC compliant with the state of Illinois. But it's not going to necessarily be where we could build it in with our software vendor where I can cut out the redundancy if by the time it hits the office, it's pre-populated a lot of the information to cut down the workload for the steps. So, would you be the liaison in that case of us working with our vendors, say Harrison Software or someone, to work towards where when this information is uploaded that, you know, it pre-populates to help when we do our billing process?
We're literally a Raleigh. We're your third-party liaison. Because at the end of the day, even though your core competency is in the ambulance district and you have certs around that, our core competency is IT and we're your tech. We are your tech and we're going to make sure that whatever competency that makes your job easier, right? From a software scenario, that we talk whatever from an IT infrastructure within Union County and correlate. So, that is 100% our job. We do it all the time with third-party softwares. And it's in our contract. We can't guarantee that we can fix it in third-party. All we know is that we can be the liaison and make sure the systems here are up to date to the current level or requirements that those type of softwares ask. And then if there's SQL code that needs to be written or some type of back type of code that needs to be written on our system, we have SQL code writers. Part of our offering. And that's, it's not an extra charge. Those things are, most some people would want to charge for them, but maybe it's our level of engineering. It's just not sustainable.
It makes our life easier.
We don't like to bill. Bill, I know it sounds weird like a company wants to not bill, but it just is easier to not bill. We get more referrals that way. We get more business that way.
And in the same light of things here, do you have any kind of reports for us that we can print out as the board or administrator as far as computer usage and mobility?
Can you use, we use Libre?
Yeah, we use Libre.
And we use Libre. Libre is pretty just a.
I don't mean snooping over, but I don't mean that.
No.
But what I'm saying is if we've got a new employee and they're sitting on the computer three-fourths of the day not working and doing other stuff, that we can know that.
I will say that most of people's monitoring, layman kind of scenario, what we do monitor is look at people's like computer utilization, like how much they're on the internet, what sites they're kind of visiting and how long, right?
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, without being illegal, I'm not saying snoop on people, but I'm saying.
There has been city governments that have asked us that, hey, our accounting lady never takes a vacation and our auditor says that we need to do deep dive inspection on everything she does. Can you put a software on there that she doesn't know anything happened and it records everything she touches? Yeah, we have that too. But we also have what you're looking for, I think, which is just a blanket scenario that says latency, like how much bandwidth we're using, who's the most, who's the highest user on this said program? What is the most frequented website that you, like, oh my gosh, how many people use Facebook? And, you know, it's one of those, or maybe we can degrade and stop Facebook. I know some people do that kind of scenario. People can go, man, why is our bandwidth just dumping at noon? Well, Angie's on Pandora, just killing it and sheriffs, all the sheriffs are on Pandora, just eating the bandwidth. Of course, I'm just joking. But my point is. My point is, is now you go at noon when your court clerk tries to do something at noon, like she can't get anything out, it's because everybody's streaming Pandora. And you'd like to know, but no one ever talks about, like, listen to, you know, the best of Larry Skinner here.
That's another reason why we want the managed switches because the managed switches will give us more of that type of info too. So, we can look at the network overall, you know, is it a bandwidth problem internally? Or is there bandwidth problem that, you know, somebody's on the pirate, downloading the latest Disney movie or something?
Yeah, we got to do that, sir.
I have one more question. During one part, you were talking about a life cycle approach on the laptops and basically I think you said every five years or, you know, whatever, we come to an agreement. And you can look at serial numbers and get age. For one thing that I haven't seen is a list of what computer.
For one thing that I haven't seen is a list of what computers.